Douglas Jaxby Jarley directed. Madam Chair, it's Director. Tim Rose, Superintendent, here.
Chief Director. Do you have any guests today in attendance? I need any, what is your name, sir?
Jeff Martin with Agelson Peterson Construction.
Okay, good for being here today, sir. We'll move on to item number three. Summary and overview of the agenda.
Thank you, James Jarley. After our allotted time, for any public comments or delegations, we will have our reports portion of the meeting. I already emailed you my superintendent's report, but we will hear the business manager's report during our agenda today. After that, we will move into the consent agenda, which has eleven items this afternoon. Unpaid, first of all, including approving the minutes on February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three board meeting. Then an unpaid leave of absence, a retirement request, two resignation requests, followed by hiring Rebecca Smith as a parent professional. After that, the board will approve additions to the sublists and then finish out the consent agenda with four out-of-state travel requests. There should be no need for a closed session at this board meeting today. The board will then move into the few regular action items on the agenda today. This includes item A, approving the list of bills and wires in the amount of two million forty-nine thousand, three hundred eighty-nine dollars and eleven cents. Followed by approving the IPAC vote of concurrence, which will then be followed by item C, approving the termination of employment of an employee. Then item D, the board will address amending nine policies. Policies two oh eight, two oh nine, two ten, four sixteen, five fifteen, six oh three, seven oh eight, seven oh nine, and seven twenty-one. We will then move into the miscellaneous portion of the agenda where we will adopt the first reading of four policies. Policy seven twenty-five, five sixteen point five, four seventeen, and four eighteen. After that, we will adjourn our meeting. Thank you.
The board may have a motion to approve the agenda for the March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll make a home.
By Rob? Second by Tom. Any of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five four. Do you have any comments or concerns regarding the agenda? Okay, with that being said, let's move forward to item five, public comments and delegations. This is a time for the members of the public to address the red flags, we're worried about items on the agenda. Today, we have Jeff here, would you like to speak, Jeff?
Um, no, ma'am.
No?
I do have, I do have a presentation.
Oh, are you?
Scholarship check.
Okay.
One of your board members, uh, won a five hundred dollar check on behalf of the school at the MSBA conference in January, so I'm just here to present that check.
Okay. So are we gonna do that now, or?
I think we certainly could do that now, that would be a good time. That way, for a couple of reasons. One is, you wish to move on and don't leave the stage the whole time, we don't drag out your time. But also because this is a good natural time for visitors and delegations to do what they hate to do.
So with that being said, Jeff, what would you like to say?
I just appreciate the opportunity to give back to communities at the, in the Minnesota area. It's, it's the fun part of my job, being able to do stuff like this, so just want to say thank you and hope to see more of your board members at a booth next year.
Wow, so one of our board members won a drawing at your booth.
Tina.
Wow.
Yep, we had a crane game, uh, you know, arcade crane game, and she won the five hundred dollar prize ball on there, so.
Tina, thank you for making the trip up here.
Oh, no problem. I was, I just did a two-for-one, we have a John going out with that, that's home down there, not booth, I'm sorry, Bemidji. So, spent some time down there and came up here to present the check, so. Not a problem at all.
Great, great, thank you so much. I, I think, um, I'm sorry that Tina's not here at the moment.
Not a problem.
I want to thank you for your time and coming up here and, and seeing us in person, I really appreciate that. And we'll be sure to keep you right home.
I appreciate that, I would just love to get some pictures and decision, whatever you decide to do with that money, just so we could put it in our, our school letter that we sent out.
Sure, would you like to take a picture of hanging that over to one of the schoolroom members?
That'd be wonderful.
Sure, let's go, can you do that right now, mister?
You can.
Okay, Superintendent, listen, Mike, would you like to take the photo with him?
I have a camera.
Oh, you do, okay.
Everybody's got a phone, you can't get away with any of that.
You take one with mine and with yours, and then.
I would appreciate that.
You'll have a copy, and I'll have a copy for us.
Okay, good. Who's gonna accept?
Good, you are not kept that skirt.
The fault, since you're the boss of one.
Wait, like that, best you.
Yep, either one's fine. Okay, I'm sure whatever you do, the marketing told you, tell me I did it wrong, so.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Whatever works.
This might be better, this way here. Right. First yours, on the counter three, one, two, three, and this one, one, two, three. Nobody blinking, I believe, everything looks good, and we even have the clock in the background, so we know the time of us.
Appreciate it so much, thank you.
There you go. Um, there is a little bit of D and P propaganda that our marketing department put together, but, so, you want to flip through that as you reach?
Thank you for coming up there.
Oh, I appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Amazing, thank you, Jeff.
Appreciate it.
You got our attention.
Yeah, I haven't seen that for a while.
That's your average card?
Oh, yeah.
Trying to read the A D.
Agelson and Peterson. Yep. Appreciate it, you all have a glorious day.
Thank you. Sure, I should mention, too, as we address the agenda. The robotics team would like to be able to show you their robot. They just came back with this past weekend from Grand Forks in competition, so if we're still in our session at, let's say, three twenty or three thirty after school, they'll come down and show us.
Oh, that'd be great.
If we happen to adjourn before that, we can go down there to take a look.
Okay, good for that. Okay, so we'll move on to item six, reports. Gichi Okama, the Board General, superintendent report, please.
Hey, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, first item is the school board meeting schedule, and of course, this being the third Wednesday of the month we're meeting today. We, uh, our next regularly scheduled, uh, meeting for a regular board meeting will be, of course, in April, where it'll fall on the third Wednesday, so that's the nineteenth. We may have occasion for a special board meeting, probably the last week of the month. Wouldn't be a long meeting, probably forty-five minutes to an hour, but a lot of times districts need to hold a special board meeting in case they need to make some adjustments or changes to staffing, which needs to be done oftentimes before April first, by statute. So I don't know for sure if we'll need to do that or not, but there is a chance that the Wednesday, the last Wednesday of March, we may have a meeting. So do make sure you're well aware of that ahead of time, if necessary. That should be enough for that particular item, then moving on to item six, A two, update since the last board meeting. There are actually no updates that are applicable to the board in terms of anything you need to know. So we can move on to, uh, well, I shouldn't, maybe I could mention that, you know, on with updates, I can mention that a couple of things coming up in the next couple of weeks. On the last Monday of March, the twenty-seventh, we have our second staff wellness event, and it's an opportunity for all staff members, regardless of their position, to join in and play games, uh, there's bingo, there's trivia, there's yoga, and a few other fun things to do, including some snacks. We had our last session here at the high school in the Commons about six weeks ago. This one will be held at the elementary, and it's in the, uh, in the afternoon, right after school, four o'clock or so, at the elementary here in Red Lake. And you are welcome to come, uh, it's a great opportunity for staff members to connect, to get to know each other, to relax a little bit, be healthy. Then the other thing that's coming up on the thirtieth of March is our parent-teacher conferences for the elementary. So on that day, which is a Thursday, we'll be letting out a little bit early, around one o'clock and around one fifteen. One o'clock at the elementary, one fifteen here, so that we can start taking parents and community members to come in for conferences. Then, I would, uh, move on to item number six, A four, which is enrollment reports. And if you, uh, in your board book, you can see the monthly enrollment report for the board. And taking a look at that, basically, we provide that information every, uh, every month, and it's a good way to take the pulse of how the district is doing. And it compares our numbers from the last previous two years and the last few months up to this particular date. So I always want to look first at the bottom right to see how our numbers have changed, and this is good news. We have increased since February tenth, since a month ago, by fifty students. Grown by fifty students. I can tell you that somewhere between ten and fifteen of those students are students who are coming to us as former mission school students, when they go to the seventh and eighth grades. Some of them went to other places, but we received, sent out an invitation, we offered some, um, orientation opportunities for these families, and a number of them came all the way. The other increases, probably thirty to thirty-five additional people or students, are from all different other walks of life. Family even back, which means coming back from wherever else they work. But that's the good news, that we are up fifty students this month as compared to last month. And that should wrap up that portion of the agenda.
Good, Superintendent. With that being said, we're gonna move on to item six, B. Junior Gichi Okama, the Board General, Business Manager reporting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Business Manager's report on page six in your board book indicates five things or items that Willie wants to make sure you are aware of. As per usual, Willie has held his bi-weekly check-in meetings with the individuals that he supervises. Then under item two, he wants us to know that the district is required to bid group health insurance coverage every two years. This year, twenty twenty-three, is the year we request bids or proposals for health insurance. So the proposal was advertised and a copy was sent to the Public Employee Insurance Program, known as PEAT, which is required by state statute. Additionally, the proposal was sent to the Northwest Service Co-op, Vetica, and Blue Cross Blue Shield. Bid will be opened on March twentieth at three forty-five PM in the district office. When bids are open, statute requires that each bargaining group, Education Minnesota, Minnesota School Employees Association, and Red Lake Principals Association be invited to the bid opening. We'll find out what our increases will be or decreases for health insurance coverage, and then we can pick which particular agency we wish to go with. Moving on to item three in Willie's report, he participated in the following webinars this past month. The MSBA Negotiation Seminar, Northwest Service Co-op Semi-Annual Health Insurance Advisory Committee Meeting, and the MDE Teacher Induction Training Program Pilot Project. We have applied to this pilot project with the MDE to be a part of a new cutting-edge initiative to improve upon our work to help those new teacher onboarding and mentoring and in the production and bring teachers on as new teachers and to help them do well and succeed. Then moving on to item four, the district has received the first fiscal year twenty-three Impact Aid payment in February. This payment represented fifty percent of the lot for basic support and five hundred dollars per child for the CWB allowance. The U.S. Department of Education is calculating final fiscal year twenty-one and fiscal year twenty-two payments during February and March. These payments should be available to districts by the end of March. After the final payments are calculated for fiscal years twenty-one and twenty-two, the U.S. Department of Education will process another partial payment for fiscal year twenty-three that'll be available to districts by June. So that's good to get that, uh, Impact Aid money's coming our way. And then finally, Willie has been working on budget amendments for twenty-two, twenty-three, the current year. He planned to bring an amendment, amended budget to the board for approval next month, April twenty twenty-three. That should wrap up the Business Manager's report for this meeting. Thank you.
I have something on the Impact Aid, um, is that, is there, so there's two, there's a spring conference and a fall conference?
Yes.
Is there one that's better to go to than the other?
Um, I don't know if I can answer that, I can tell you I went to the fall conference, and at that one, I found it to be very useful. I learned a lot about the origins, importance of Impact Aid and the need to, um, be aware of what it does for us and how to communicate that need to our legislators. The spring conference, I have never attended, of course, this is my first year here, and we didn't go this spring, too many things I needed to stay back for. So I don't know if anybody else here has been to this.
Are there also, um, conferences where you go see, you know, everyone and the representatives?
In the spring, it is, yeah, and we have a big contingent from Northwest Minnesota already going, so I felt that I didn't need to go, but maybe next year we could do that, it's been a couple of months ago. So, but I think in terms of what you learn, the fall one is better, the spring one is more spreading the hallways in the Capitol Hill.
A lot of hockey.
Yep.
Superintendent, last I forgot to mention, um, do I need to get board approval to attend, um, MSBA Capitol Day?
Nope, you shouldn't, you could ask in-state.
Okay.
Couldn't be necessary. And I'm glad you're considering going to that.
Yes, I will be attending.
Yeah.
In the past, we attended Red Lake Day at Capitol, that was interesting. This year, we.
Yeah.
I didn't get it, did we not get an invite?
I didn't see one, and I wonder if.
You guys go in the past couple of years?
That might have been.
Did they even get included?
No, not this year, but in, in the past year.
Red Lake Day at Capitol?
Well, we never got any.
But in the past, those do that.
I would guess it's a casualty of COVID, maybe they just forgot to start that up again. But with the, uh, you know, the push now is to do a bit more like, have MSBA do things like this, or, um, MREA, Minnesota Rural Ed, uh, they like this to be more unified. MREA speaks for all Minnesota rural school districts, and I used to sit on the board. They liked it when, when I was superintendent of Bemidji, we would often go down, Bemidji Day at the Capitol, not just the district, but the, uh, Chamber of Commerce, the mayor's office, the newspaper, we would all go down there. And it was a bit difficult because MREA would just like us to be all on the same page. But here comes Bemidji asking for very specific, you know, and it, MREA and MSBA, I believe they think it's more colorful if we all go and have a voice. So if we go with MSBA, we can still get our message to our legislators.
What is that?
Um, Monday morning, in St. Paul at the Hilton, and so we'll discuss our finance, Minnesota Department of Education will be there discussing finance throughout the morning session, and then in the afternoon is when we visit our representatives. But I'm not arranged to meet with anybody individually.
I think they'll set that up, or they'll talk about that in the morning, you know, how that works. I've never gone to MSBA one before.
But it starts Monday at seven thirty. Okay, with that being said, we're gonna move on to item seven, Consent Agenda for March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. We have a motion to approve. We'll switch mic motions to approve, we have a second. One second, second by Tina, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do we have any discussion or concerns about the agenda before we move forward? Item eight, closed session if necessary. Superintendent, do we have a closed session?
Should not have, because we may after this next month or so, as we start negotiating with our different bargaining units. That's one reason to go into closed session, is to discuss strategy in negotiations, but not at this time.
And you and I still have to set up our meeting, too. We're talking about it. So we'll move on to item nine, action items.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item nine A is to approve the bills and wires of the month of February. Bills and wires in the amount of two million forty-nine thousand, three hundred eighty-nine dollars and eleven cents.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll move on.
Good, Mike, Mike motions to approve. Do you have a second? I will, Tina second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Item nine B, approve the AIPAC vote of concurrence.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and before we get on to that, can I ask again who made the motion and who seconded?
I'm sorry, it was Mike and Tina second.
Okay.
And six four.
Thank you.
Sorry, I forgot you were doing that.
I forgot you for a second, so I couldn't, so you need to look forward to the next item too soon. So the, uh, approve the IPAC vote of concurrence, and this is something that is, is required to do every, every year, and if you look in your board book, I will, uh, direct you to the item that we have there, it's a page. Once, no, that's not it, I guess there is no attachment, so this time I noticed that Dr. Gnuvishik is here, so perhaps he can explain a little bit. The purpose of this, but basically it's all about having the IPAC committee incur or agree with our programs and what we're doing in the district. So, you can summarize for us.
Okay, American, American Union Parent Advisory Committee, they are advisory, advisory team, they're not directors, they're advisors, and, uh, by federal law, they have the right, if not duty. And by federal law, they have the right, if not duty, to be, have voice in the direction of the school. So they can come into any of the meetings of the budgets for Title One, Title Three and say, you know, here's our input. And we're not, we're not required to take their, as a direction, directive. We can use it as advice. And so with the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee, I make sure that I, I let them know what Title One is used for, what we're using it for, what Title Two, title monies, and our federal Indian Ed money and our state Indian Ed money, and ask for their advice in designing the budgets for those. And so this annual, annual compliance or vote of concurrence has two names. And this here is for them to vote to say, is the district in compliance with what we said we're going to do and what, and do they have a voice in being part of those discussions? And they voted yes, that we are yes indeed in compliance. They're fine with our relationship with the parent advisory committee. And so now I just need to bring this to you to formalize it and approve or disapprove and then get the signature and send it down. So the parent advisory committee, I got the signature from the chair. It's in our minutes. The votes are in our minutes. And we just need to sign this. If there are any questions. I do know I tried to educate them on finances for the school and educating for what all of our grants are. Title One is for, is to decrease the achievement gap for minorities versus state. And we use that money to pay for interventionists, et cetera. Title Two is for professional development for teachers and principals and parents. And we decide what we're going to spend that money at the district. But they have voice in that. And Title Seven or Title Six is federal Indian Ed money and that's one hundred percent of that pays for teacher salaries, language would you be language teacher salaries? So that doesn't really fluctuate and they're fine with that. And we did a couple of, they helped us, helped me write the budget for this year and for the end compliance for next year for the state Indian Ed money. And so I had them help me decide how they wanted to use that. And we wrote that in. And so they have been part of, part of doing their jobs as advisory and they like what we're doing so far.
Can't forget to get the signature on to approve this.
Yeah.
Thank you. Good explanation.
I'll move to approve that.
We'll switch first. You got a second?
I'll second.
Move by Chris, second by Ron. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We'll switch, appreciate your time.
You get Minut Dogwood if we.
He's alive. He is. Okay, with that being said, we're going to move on to item nine C. Approve termination of employment with employee two thousand twenty-three dash C, effective March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you, Madam Chair. By the way, I have a good teacher, so I appreciate it. Almost every day I learn something. This is an area where, again, we directly, first of all, to page one seventy-nine in board book. It's, there's two pages, one seventy-nine and one eighty, I guess it's one eighty-one as well. But it's a recommendation of termination. We have to, again, be careful here. You can see the name. We have to refer to this employee, basically a code name, two twenty-three C. But the recommendation is based on substandard work performance and misconduct, including but not limited to job abandonment. And in the disciplinary record, there is a letter of expectation and verbal reprimand or attendance, some excessive absences. And basically job abandonment that this individual hasn't come to work since January fifth. And as you all know, in order to get the job done, we have to have someone that is reliable. So we bring this recommendation. We always do so reluctantly, but we have to do this to you for approval of termination so we can hire someone else. Thank you.
We'll switch. Board, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Motion by Tom. Do you have a second? Second by Tina. All those in favor, please say aye. Six-zero. We move it on to nine D, amend policies two oh eight, developments of policies two oh nine, code of ethics two ten, conflict of interest four sixteen, drug and alcohol testing by fifteen, protection of pupil records six oh three, curriculum development seven oh eight, transportation non-public seven oh nine, student transportation safety and seven two one, uniform grant guidance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And in all of these cases, these policies are M S B A policies and they are amended policies. We have them already, but they're cleaning up the language a little bit based on the need to have more clarity or in some cases, the need to adjust language based on statutory changes that may have been made. But in all of these cases, these are policies that the policy committee met and discussed and are bringing forward for your approval. And we don't need to go through all of them one by one, but it's basically something that we can do in a first reading because these are our current policies and they are recommended for amendments and in most cases they're minor amendments. So I bring these policies to you en masse to get them approved and amended today.
And pretty much everything is all highlighted on.
Yep, and it's all standard and all routine.
We'll switch. Board, can I get a motion to approve?
I'll move.
And then Mike, can I get a second?
I'm second. That was a lot of reading.
It was. I agree, Chris. We switch for that. Second by Chris. Do we have, are all those in favor, ma'am? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, six-zero. We're moving on to item ten, miscellaneous.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will refer you to page two ninety-six and we'll go eventually to three oh eight and two ninety-six for first two policies. And this is the first of three readings for each of these sets of policies. And in this case, these are also, these first two are actually new policies. So I want to spend just a couple of minutes highlighting a couple of things on them. I'm going to switch over to my hard copy here. And I want to point out that on this first one, five, they're actually in reverse order, but first come to five, sixteen point five, overdose medication. And I won't read the whole thing, but I want to read the purpose of this. As the means of enhancing the health and safety that students, staff and visitors, the school district will acquire, administer and store doses of opiate antagonists, specifically naloxone or Narcan and administration devices or kits for emergency use be given to and to assist students, staff member or other individuals believed or suspected to be experiencing an opioid overdose on district property during school day or at school district activities. I can tell you that this is something the district has been doing and has been ahead of the game across the state. The M S B A is catching up by cleaning up language and providing a policy that will add additional protection to the district by having it as a policy. If you are a coach or simply in the building and you are aware of and know where Narcan is, we have had training for all of our staff, and you suspect someone is overdosing on heroin or fentanyl or any of those, you may administer a dose of Narcan. Narcan cannot be given as an overdose. You can't overdose on Narcan. So even if you give Narcan and they're not overdosing on heroin, let's say, you do no harm. But if you don't do something, great harm could be done. So the M S B A has put out this policy just to make sure that we understand what to do and that we are covered in any case as a district. So that's what this particular policy is for. Now, if you'd like to move on to the next policy in here, which is policy seven twenty-five. And it's actually seven twenty-two is the typo in the agenda, policy seven twenty-two. The purpose of this policy is that the school district recognizes its responsibility relative to the collection, maintenance and dissemination of public data as provided in state statutes. So this one is more of an amendment, but it's been amended so much that it's practically a new policy. And basically, again, refers to the responsibilities of the district when it comes to confidential information on students and on staff. So again, it's a policy that's, because it's dealing with privacy, it's required. But because it's fairly, not just a minor amendment, it's fairly overhaul, we are treating it as today as one of the first reading three of yours that I would bring to for your consideration today. Then we can move on to the next two policies. And they start on page three oh eight in the board book. And these, again, are amended policies. Take a look on page three oh nine, you can see that almost everything in this one has been overhauled. But again, the reason for this overhaul is to simplify and become more efficient in the language. And the school board, the purpose is that the board recognizes that chemical use and abuse constitutes a grave threat physical and mental well-being of students and employees, significantly improves the learning process. Chemical use and abuse also creates significant problems for society in general. The school board believes that the public school has a role in education intervention and intervention of chemical use and abuse. The purpose of this policy is to assist the school district in its goal that chemical use and abuse by providing procedures of education and intervention. And again, we do all of these things already, but it's a way to clean up and clarify a bit better and be more concise in language about what we need to do to provide chemical abuse and drug education to students and to staff. And then, thank you, the very last one, again, is one that we already have. It's revision. Drug-free workplace, drug-free school, policy four eighteen. The purpose is to maintain a safe and helpful environment for employees and students by prohibiting the use of alcohol, toxic substances, medical cannabis and non-intoxicating cannabinoids, including edible cannabinoid products and controlled substances without physician's prescription. Again, we're doing all of these items, but it has to do with making sure we continue to educate and keep an eye out, protect our students and our staff. So I bring these four additional policies for your approval and adoption as a first reading today. We don't need to go on it because it's the first reading. We will review it again in April and then we'll finally in May, at that time we'll adopt it before we go.
We'll switch for now. Great, school board, if there's nothing else further, they have a, okay, go ahead. I got some last thing. Or we, we before something. But I want one of those Johnny's. You just missed him. He was here and Chris accepted on your behalf.
Yeah, we gave Chris all your money.
We're looking for you.
He was here. He come and he brought something. He got something there and.
Check and then there's, I don't know, this shows off their construction projects.
Oh, okay.
Nice job, Tina. Thank you.
I bet you won the grand prize. We'll switch.
What, like some type of skill cream?
A what?
Or how did you win it? You were played some type of, did some type of game at the vendor booth or?
I wonder, oh, some of them, I just put my name in a box. And I went play that at, um, that robotic thing.
Oh, okay. Those are cool. I tried that out.
It could have been, it was a construction company.
Yeah, five hundred bucks.
Every dollar counts, but thank you.
We accepted that today and he was here. I knew that you missed him. Maybe sent him other way.
And then archery, the Red Lake Elementary archery team will be competing in the state national archery in the schools competition, March twenty-fourth in Duluth at the DEP. Leaving here at one, competing at four forty-five. Leave at seven thirty, should be back at ten thirty.
What was the date again?
March twenty-fourth.
Oh.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Wow, I have an announcement. We're having our first annual Red Lake where you basketball tournament this Saturday in Red Lake. And we have six third grade boys teams signed up helping with that. And then we have four fourth grade boys, three fourth grade girls, two third grade girls and two fifth grade girls. Three fifth grade boys. We're bringing in some of the senior students up. Our students are practicing. We started practicing up there, so we're super excited. Everyone's coming together. We're going to be game workers and we have refs, third party refs. That's a hot topic in our community. Just want to share that you are all welcome to come and spectate. We'll have food stand available. The first game starts Saturday at nine A M. Championship last game is Saturday at five twenty. It was our first one and we hope to have them regularly.
We have a licensed therapist set up over at the Boys and Girls Club for the next two days. She started yesterday. Basically, they're doing intake right now. So if you have any kids, grandkids, nephews that she'd like to receive free well, mental wellness services, including therapy, that's going to be offered at the Boys and Girls Club. Sometimes our therapist is based out of the Twin Cities area, but she works for our Red Lake Youth Shelter program. So sometimes, so she'll be available all the time. Sometimes it'll be virtual. I know that sounds different and not so great way when it comes to therapy, but actually what's being said is a lot of you don't mind the virtual therapy option. So right now we're doing intake. We're trying to get kids signed up. So we need parents and guardians to fill out a couple sheets of paper. And they'll be eligible for different types of mental wellness services. So really cool opportunity considering, you know, it's all free. So no therapy and mental wellness services outside of, you know, our community that costs a lot. We need certain insurances for. So I just wanted to put that up there to you guys, if you guys know of anybody.
Tomorrow and Friday?
Today and tomorrow. Yep, she's there all day at club. She's hanging out, meeting the kids. We're sending home paperwork with the kids, like only catching all the parents in the parking lot and they pick up their kids and stuff, so. Trying to get as much kids as possible signed up. And this won't be the only time we can do intake, you know, this is kind of like our introduction.
It is great service. Thank you.
We'll switch for now. I appreciate that, Tom. Thanks for sharing. I want to piggyback off Tom's on topic I brought to Superintendent Project eleven. I brought to Superintendent Project 11, the MAX. And this has to do with mental health awareness curriculum in our district. And so I want to share with the board that the school is looking into that and hopefully that'll be available P through 12 in the upcoming months.
I reached out and I have a meeting lined up for next week. Because they have meetings every couple of weeks, but unfortunately that meeting won't work for us. There's too many of us have a conflict, so I'm reaching out and working with the organizers to come up with another date. Maybe a week or two later. And we'll learn more about that. And then we'll hopefully enroll, it's all free, all these materials are free. The concept behind it is that we, we all get trained as classroom educators to provide some time of mental health awareness and ability to self-regulate and learn about mental health in our classrooms. So that we all become, you know, helping with this issue. We listen to the news at all and hear all the time about the shortages of mental health practitioners and the dire need of youth, of everybody with mental health need, adults and youth. And we can't wait to find mental health practitioners coming out of colleges. We have to do some of our own work and this is what can be done. This is one initial step that we can do to help kids feel better and grow and heal. Surround them with this, so. I'm excited about it and I've reached out to a couple of school districts in the area that are doing this. And they tell me it's going great.
And it's free.
In the same time, Compel hired two homeless counselors yesterday.
What do you think?
A counselor leaving there, so. Millie Johnson will be kind of sliding over.
Really?
She's, she's a tiny parent.
Yeah.
Interviewed really well, and then there's another gal I know. I don't know, they don't. Well, she's, she works up here. I imagine that was very weird.
Congratulations for Millie.
Millie and Kayla Dowland.
Yeah, I'm pretty excited about the project 11, you know, they have these books that were written you know, to, for the young children to identify with how they're feeling and how to deal with it. And it's not where a teacher has to do lessons one to, you know, they can pick thirty-two today and lesson two then next week. Whatever they feel the child is dealing with at that particular time.
All written already and you just pull whatever one you need at that time? And some people might think, well, this is more work now, more on our plates. Really, it's not because if it helps kids regulate the behaviors better, then you have fewer fighters to put out down the road. So that's promising and it's also encouraging to hear about these two new Compel practitioners.
And also the Boys and Girls Club.
If you can keep doing that, you said this wouldn't be the only time, right?
Yeah, the idea is she's working full time through the newly developed program called the Red Lake Nation Youth Shelter. Right now they're just offering outpatient stuff, you know, and eventually it'll be a crisis shelter with a building, you know, similar to, are you familiar with Evergreen Youth Shelter in Lomiji? Sort of like that, you know, but they're, they're in the process of developing their own policies and procedures based in, you know, mission, I've a core of views and values. So for now, you know, operating therapy, mental health wellness services is what they're doing. But eventually, yeah, we're gonna have a whole youth shelter set up for kids to go to during times of crisis.
Very nice. We have Rena Gonzalez coming tomorrow at 10 o'clock. Meet with our principals and cabinets and just tell us more about youth shelters.
Yep, she's the lead retired assistant director, so.
Looking forward to the line. About that.
Oh, wow, my goodness, thanks.
Well, should we go see, I guess we gotta return first, go see that robot? If you're interested?
We have to adjourn. Okay, tell me it's time to stand up, you've been sitting too long.
Yep. Ten minutes, true.
Great, well, so we'll move on to item 11, adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Tina motions? Do we have a second, school board?
Second.
Um, second, all those in favor, please say aye. Right, seven, four.
Two fifty-two?
Two fifty-two. All right, we're adjourned, we're gonna walk down to robotics and check out the new. If you'd like to join us, that'd be great. We invited this down. Willie, I think he is, yes. Get everything. And I haven't worked pain that it.
Why are you gonna go, I'll give you that too. That's already in your calendar.
Want to buy one thousand dollars in politics?
Can I?
No, that's for the school. Well, who might give this to it?
Well, actually I can take and give it to Willie, yeah.
Well, I'm going to Willie.
Thank you.
All right, and just go to the. Can I give it to Willie?
Now that two guys approved these four, I'll say this, I'll be going to South Dakota with your leaders.
Are you leaving next week or what?
Yep, next Tuesday, next Friday, we're bringing them more on leadership.
We're in Chamberlain or what?
Chamberlain, yeah. And Laura Bruhl. And Standing Rock, they'll come down from North Dakota. I'm excited about what that will be for our kids and our readers.
Do we need to move that now since we adjourned?
We need what, sorry? Yep. Let's go.